Our First Nations acknowledgement, which is up on the screen in the beautiful work of Rick Harry. So this evening, we're starting with a public hearing. I do want to just highlight item number, sorry. Item number five on the council agenda is pulled for this evening. I'll explain why when we get closer to that item, but we're not going to discuss that one tonight. Thank you to our corporate officer.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. So I will describe some formalities and procedures for tonight's public hearing on behalf of the mayor. Good evening, everyone. Council is convening this public hearing to consider and receive submissions regarding proposed official community plan bylaw number 4985-2018, amendment bylaw number 5280-2023, and proposed zoning bylaw number 4662-2010, amendment bylaw number 5281-2023, and regarding proposed land use contract development area agreement 1957 discharge bylaw number 5282-2023 for the address 2229 Folkestone Way. A public meeting will be held concurrently with a public hearing to receive submissions regarding proposed development permit 22-109, also for the same address 2229 Folkestone Way. Anyone who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws and the proposed development permit will be heard and/or may make a written submission, either in person or via email to correspondence@westvancouver.ca. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. Council members may ask questions of you following your presentation, but council's function during this public hearing is to listen to the views of the public and not to debate the proposed bylaws and proposed development permit. After the public hearing and concurrent public meeting has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations. Your only opportunity to comment on the proposed bylaws is during the public hearing. Council is not permitted to receive further submissions once council has closed the public hearing. Council has received documents which are available for the public to view. A hard copy of these may be obtained from myself, the binder right there, during the public hearing and concurrent public meeting. These documents can also be viewed online at westvancouver.ca/news/notices. However, please note that these copies of documents do not include written submissions received after noon today. To maintain order and to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard, here are the rules of procedure. A speakers list has been established. For those attending in person, you may place your name on the list at any time throughout the public hearing and concurrent public meeting. The list is right by the door there. If you are speaking from prepared remarks, council requests that a copy be provided to the deputy corporate officer. To participate via WebEx, please phone 604-925-7004. Provide your name and telephone number to staff, who will add you to the speakers list. When it is your turn to address council, staff will allow you to unmute your microphone and turn on your webcam in order to provide you with your public input opportunity. Please note that staff will not be in a position to provide you with a specific time slot when you register to speak, so we ask that participants who wish to address council be available for the duration of the public hearing and concurrent public meeting. Council requests that you please begin your remarks by providing your name and municipality of residence. If you're speaking on behalf of some other person or organization, council requests that you please identify the name of that person or organization. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and to the subject of the proposed bylaws and proposed development permit. Please be respectful to others. After everyone has spoken once, you will have an opportunity to speak subsequent times to provide additional information if you wish. Please follow the process outlined a moment ago to be re-added to the speakers list. If you have any concerns about the rules of the hearing, please address your comments to the chair. Just before I hand it over to someone else, I do need to inform that council has received a total of one staff report and seven written submissions to date. They are included in the agenda package and the public information binder. On November 27, 2023, council set the date for this public hearing, and the statutory notice of public hearing was published in the North Shore News on January 10 and 17, 2024. That's it for me. Unless the chair has any other comments, we'll hand it over to staff for their presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Ms. McGuire.
One moment. Sorry, good evening, Mayor, council members. Public speaker. Oh, your mic. There. Your mic is on.
Oh, thank you. So for consideration tonight, a public hearing is a proposed development project for the Salmon House site at 2229 Folkestone Way. So here you can see the site in the middle of the aerial image on the screen there. It includes the existing Salmon House on the Hill Restaurant, which is well-known in West Vancouver, in the Panorama Ridge neighborhood above the Upper Levels Highway. The map on the top right of the screen there just shows a bit of the broader context of the area. Here, this slide shows two photos of the existing restaurant. As I said, the site's located above the Upper Levels Highway. It's accessed from Ski Lift Road. It's approximately 60,000 square feet in size and has the existing Salmon House on the Hill Restaurant located on it. You can see there in the photos it's two stories now and includes office uses at the ground level and the restaurants on the second level. In the surrounding area, which is known as the Panorama Ridge area, there's a mix of multifamily buildings. That includes apartments and townhouses to the northwest and east. Here you can see a site plan showing the proposed development. What's proposed is a new residential townhouse building on the western portion of the site. You can see that on the left-hand side of the screen there. That includes eight townhouse units. And then a new commercial building that's two stories on the eastern portion of the site on the right-hand side of the screen there. The overall proposed development is proposed at an FAR or floor area ratio of .43, and it includes a mix of surface and underground parking throughout the site with extensive landscaping intended to screen the proposed surface parking. As well, there are pedestrian connections around the site and through the site accessing Ski Lift Road to the south there. Here you can see a rendering of the proposed townhouse building. Both new buildings are proposed in a West Coast modern style using timber beams, textured concrete, and metal slats. For the townhomes themselves, there's eight units, as I said. Those are all proposed to be three-bedroom units, approximately 2,000 square feet in size each. Viewed from Ski Lift Road, the townhouse building is three stories, whereas viewed from the surface parking area, it's actually two stories, so it's stepped. And it does include underground parking, so there's 16 underground parking stalls for the residents of the townhouse units, as well as six surface visitor stalls for the townhouse building. Here you can see renderings of the proposed commercial building. It's proposed to be two stories in a similar configuration as the existing building is today. That includes offices on the lower level and then a new replacement restaurant on the upper level. And there's also 24 surface-level parking stalls provided for the commercial building. In terms of public engagement, the applicant did host a neighborhood meeting prior to submitting their formal application. That was in March of 2022. And then more recently, after council set the date for public hearing, the applicant hosted another neighborhood meeting on December 12th. Thirty-eight residents did attend the meeting and raised questions and comments, and the topic areas are listed there on the screen. For most of the questions that the neighbors raised, the applicant team was able to respond to those and provide information. Two main topic areas in terms of comments received were maybe more the focus of the comments. That was in terms of the existing trees on the site. There were some residents that were favoring or supporting retention of as many trees as possible, whereas there were a number of residents that were in support of selective pruning or topping of trees to help improve views for residences up north of the existing site. And then another area of concern that was raised was regarding traffic and congestion in the area when school pickup and drop-off times occur. We did talk to our engineering colleagues, and they looked at records of the Ski Lift and Folkestone intersection in the past with ICBC information and noted that they don't have any significant concerns about how the intersection is operating, but that they do, you know, they do ongoing review of that and would continue to do that going forward. So in terms of technical review of the project, the development proposal was reviewed by the designer review committee twice, and then at September meeting of last year, they provided a recommendation of support with comments that the applicant responded to before coming to council with the current development permit. And then in terms of transportation, the applicant submitted a transportation impact assessment report that was reviewed and accepted by staff. And then finally, in terms of sustainability, the project does respond to the district's sustainable buildings policy and would be required to achieve step three for the commercial building of the BC Energy Step Code. And then in terms of policy considerations, this project falls under Official Community Plan or OCP policy 2.1.5. That policy encourages redevelopment of existing commercial sites like the Salmon House site with mixed-use and live-work development, allowing for residential units in conjunction with commercial uses on sites and allowing up to a maximum of three stories. And staff reviewed the project against this policy direction, and in staff's opinion, it complies with that and is consistent with that policy. And then finally, the project does respond to the district's public amenity policy with a proposed community amenity contribution of 264,000. To conclude, staff are recommending that, subject to the public hearing, that council approve the proposed bylaws and development permit, as in staff's opinion, it is consistent with relevant official community plan direction to allow for redevelopment of existing commercial sites and generally because the application would allow for the development of eight new townhouse units and would replace the existing restaurant and offices that serve the Panorama Ridge neighborhood and the larger West Vancouver community. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions. I do know the applicant team also has a presentation available as well in our here.
Thanks very much. Members of council, any question for Ms. McGuire? In hearing not, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Thank you for joining us this evening.
No problem. Thank you. Thanks for having us. My name is PJ Mallon. I'm with MGB Architecture. We are working with the Salmon House for the design of the redevelopment of this site. Also with us, we've got a couple of members of the ownership group. If you happen to have any directed questions that are kind of of that sort of nature. And we also have Mark Vaughan with Vaughan Planning, who's our landscape architect on the file, who he won't be making any kind of presentation remarks, but we'll be on head to field any questions if you have anything in particular about the landscape design. Yeah, so we'll take you through a very brief presentation. This is really akin to what we had actually presented with the, to the DRC group back in fall. And it really is kind of an explanation beyond the package that you received through the first report from staff about the development. It really just kind of explains our maneuvers for how we got to where we got and how the site is organized while we've done it. So as you all know, and as Michelle pointed out, this is a, you know, long, historic, famous restaurant building in West Vancouver, been here for a better part of four decades or more. The purpose really of the project is the, the building is really at end of life. It's becoming a bit of a maintenance problem and certainly has seen better days. So the ownership group felt it was high time to do that replacement, and in doing so also offered the site a little bit of additional density through the introduction of eight townhouse units. So it's a, it's a light densification of the property overall and basically fits right into basically what the official community plan would be calling for in terms of use and form and organization for the site. Just a little bit about context, I'm sure you're all familiar with Panorama. Obviously, it's basically set up like a giant movie theater with a very, very sort of steep road system, and all of the kind of contextual neighborhood buildings are all really kind of geared to kind of take advantage of that wonderful view into the Burrard Inlet and beyond. Everything really kind of southward oriented and in its sort of organization and fashion. So taking that from that queue, we were wanting to basically organize the new development in much the same fashion. So in terms of the design rationale, it really is a proper response to the local OCP guidelines that are the BFC, or BFC, the local commercial sites, which really speaks about kind of low-density, low-rise forms, which is really exactly what we're basically delivering for the new project. In terms of all of the guidelines themselves, basically all of them are pretty much met with the approach of the architecture and the building design. I won't sort of go through all the sort of level of detail here, but basically, most of the points are actually directly addressed with the design of the building.
And we have read, we've received all of this information.
Yeah, yeah, great. Yeah, and it goes without saying, the site is really challenged in terms of the steepness of the grades. It literally goes 40 feet from sort of top to bottom, right across the site, so that really plays heavily in how we've organized everything. And we're really trying to kind of focus and concentrate the redevelopment just at the center of the site, really, leaving the existing edges around the property basically intact and not doing anything with regard to the existing site access, so it really will kind of look and feel like the same situation that we have in the neighborhood there today. There's a little bit of on-street parking that everybody is probably familiar with, just along Ski Lift Road, and we're going to be making a connection to that. And that blue arrow really represents an existing historic pedestrian connection that Michelle alluded to that connects Ski Lift to Folkestone, and we'll continue to have that connection. Generally speaking, the sort of local neighborhood property is organized as really heavily forested and densely landscaped at the site's edges, with the sort of upper level of landscaping along properties that are predominantly taller. And then sort of the light green things indicate kind of low existing landscape, which we intend to basically just keep basically intact as best we can through the redevelopment. And as you can see, this sort of local context, again, all the buildings kind of behave almost in the same way. They're all really kind of accessed from the north sides of them where their parking fields are kind of kept and sort of screened from road systems. And then all the major building entries sort of occur on the north side, again, really capitalizing on the prevailing views, which is really how we're going to approach our development as well. So really, the two-building approach was organized in such a way to actually pull the commercial portion of the program a little bit further away from the existing residents to our west and sort of interrupting where the Salmon House once stood with another residential building, which kind of relates a little bit more contextually in our minds for that. And again, organizing our surface parking level kind of hidden behind the buildings from Ski Lift and screened by the existing landscaping along Folkestone Way. And these are just a couple of sections to really kind of give a sense of the scale of the building vis-à-vis kind of the nearest neighbors, you know, behind us up the hill. The new developments shouldn't really interrupt any views of any kind, so there shouldn't be any sort of concern over sort of block views or anything along those lines. And again, just a little focus showing that the surface parking is really heavily screened by the existing landscaping along Folkestone and shouldn't be readily visible from any sort of street level. And similar section through the townhomes facing west, same sort of program and story. It really is just that from the surface parking level, it appears to be a two-story building, and it's more of a three-story building from Ski Lift Road. And then we had a public information meeting back in December, and as Michelle alluded, we heard a number of comments. And one of the ones that we did want to kind of bring a new slide to was really talking about mechanical systems and the anticipated noise levels that we are going to be expecting to hear from them. There's going to be a couple of units that are of kind of particular interest. On the roof of the residential building, we'll be having some heat pumps, which we anticipate are going to be running to about sort of under 40 DBAs by the time it actually gets to the nearest neighbor, which is well below the kind of sustainable levels that are outlined in the bylaw. And then over on the restaurant side, we're actually organizing all of the exhaust systems and the air handling systems on the lower roof on the very east side, as far away from the west neighbors as possible. Our nearest neighbors that will be sort of of interest are the ones immediately just sort of northeast, which represent about sort of 40 meters away. Again, with the duration and distance, we're estimating that the unit, when it's running, which would only be running during restaurant hours, is going to be below 40 DBA anticipated from that distance. And that sort of outlines where it's basically going to be located, on the roof of the Salmon House new building. And finally, we just wanted to sort of end with a slide that talks a little bit about some of the landscape treatment. We did hear some comments and concerns at the public information meeting about sort of the existing condition. On the left side of the screen there, obviously, we can see what the existing sort of sign sort of sits in. It's actually kind of a little bit unkempt, and it's a little bit overgrown and hasn't been sort of maintained perfectly over the last little while. But our opportunity here is to redress that corner with more formal landscaping, as we've got a range, and we'll be reorganizing a new site sign in roughly around the same scale as the existing sign, but something that's a little bit more naturalistic and sort of nestled into the backdrop. And you can kind of see the composite photo of what the Salmon House restaurant would look like in the back. So I'll just conclude our presentation at that and just field any questions for you if you have any specific questions of the design team.
Thanks very much. Just one question.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, just part of being around a long time. I remember when the Salmon House was first built.
Yeah.
And it's already end of life.
Yes, yeah.
That's a little depressing, I've got to tell you. So on a design like this, what's the life expectancy of the replacement?
Oh, it should go about five or six decades at least.
I hope so.
I hope so, too.
It seems like such a waste. Members of council, any questions? Counselor Cassidy.
Yes, how many parking stalls do you have for the restaurant?
I believe Michelle mentioned 23.
Was it 23?
Yeah, they're all on the surface. And then the residents actually all have their stalls underneath the building to per.
And as the current tenant of the restaurant, are they going to be a returning tenant of the restaurant?
That's right.
All right.
And they'll be actually, the ownership group that will also own the townhomes in perpetuity.
Okay. And as the heat pump is running, what are the hours of the restaurant?
The restaurant right now is Wednesday to Sunday, 5 to 10.
Okay.
And they don't open for lunch, so it's only just sort of that sort of evening activity from about 5 to about 10.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Counselor Watt.
Yeah, so 23 parking stalls, is that for staff as well, or is that all customer parking?
It's basically all for the restaurant, for both staff and customers, and then some overflow that would be available on Ski Lift Road.
Okay. And how many staff are typically working in the current restaurant?
I'll turn to the ownership group for that, Michael. About 15.
Do they all drive?
Not at one time.
Good.
I would assume that most staff do drive and arrive. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
Yes, what is the occupancy capacity of the restaurant?
I think we've got it pinned at around 150 seats. It's a slight reduction in the number of seats of what they have there today.
And you only have 23 parking stalls?
That is in conjunction with working with staff and bylaws to meet the bylaws, yeah.
So the rest are going to go out onto the road?
There will be some use of the Ski Lift Road parking stalls that are there today, and staff heavily encouraged us to actually decrease the supply of parking as best we could.
Oh, that's very nice of staff. I'm sure the people in Ski Lift will be happy.
Counselor Watt.
Yeah, how many parking stalls are currently there?
I think they, oh, I don't have the immediate answer to that question, but it is a slight reduction of what we're actually delivering.
Slight, like 5%?
I think it went from, it's 58 existing, and they don't typically fill up, and we're down to about 23 now.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's significant.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy.
So I'm rather curious, back on the parking, I can understand why staff would ask for a reduction in parking for residential, all right, the push to transit. But I'm just rather curious, on a restaurant, why would that be requested when, especially a restaurant in this location, because other than the residents sub Ski Lift Road, most people are going to be driving there, they won't be taking the bus. So that's not a lot of parking spots.
We had a traffic engineer work with us, and the restaurant group is comfortable with the level of parking that's going to be provided at site. They were encouraging us to lose a few more, but we were sort of resistant at this point in position. This is where the restaurant feels that they're going to be adequately secure.
Okay, so as I am just about as bad as Mayor Sager in the sense of, you know, knowing when this building first opened up, but so I know it's on a slope, and between the end of the hill and the street, there is a gravelled area. So I would be thinking potentially that people going to the restaurant will park on that gravel area and walk up around the corner. So will that parking impact the residents of your townhouses?
Well, the residents of the townhouses will have two each, and they'll be secure and underground.
No, no, no. What I mean is, are they going to be looking out to a view of parked cars?
Well, there will be some organized parking on Ski Lift Road. There's some legal stalls that are there today, and we anticipate that they're going to be in use during peak hours of the restaurant. But after 9:00 PM, we don't expect to be seeing much of parked cars there at all after the restaurant quietens down.
Has there been any thought to actually formalizing that parking in that area, the gravel area?
It wasn't sort of part of what we were sort of anticipating doing with the purview of the project, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of council? Thanks, sorry. Mr. Vaughan, always nice to see you, sir.
Great to see you as well. Great to see council. I believe that the gravel area has long since been paved over. It's all a parking area. It handles a lot of buses during the day, right off the highway. So it is all parking, fully stalls. Very hard to see from the units as well, because it is quite a draw.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vaughan. No other questions from members of council? Counselor Gambioli.
Yeah, I'm going to read the motion a second, but I just do have one little question that's not about parking.
Ooh, fantastic.
I am the most interested in the new residential units. So can you just tell us a little bit about who they're for and, you know, what exactly is the relevance of those?
Yeah, we basically laid them out as three bedrooms, anticipating they would be for small families, basically, and rental units that would be held by the ownership group in perpetuity. Other than that level of detail, I can't really sort of go beyond that sort of level of description. But they're all about, as we mentioned, about 2,000 square feet each, so a couple of stalls per, and then some nice south-facing decks off the end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, it's now an opportunity for any member of the public who's here this evening who wishes to address council. So gentlemen, I'm going to say thank you, and I'll call for any public input.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. We do have two names on the speakers list already. The first is Rick, and I'm afraid I could not read the last name.
Ryan.
Ryan, thank you. And the next speaker after that will be Elaine McHark.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Rick Ryan. I live at 752212 Folkestone Way, right across the street from the Salmon House property. I'm also the president of the strata plan, so I have an input from myself as an owner and some feedback from some of the other owners in our complex. I, along with others, attended the presentation in December at the Salmon House. We, as a group, and we personally support the project. We are glad to see it develop this way. We've been concerned that the Salmon House from a number of years has gone from serving lunch and dinner seven days a week to only dinner five days a week. We suspect that in the new restaurant, they'll revert back to probably six or seven nights a week, and it wouldn't surprise us if it ended up serving lunch as well. So we think that the improvements will certainly generate more activity around the site. And as a result of our belief that that will happen, we do have a few concerns. The first concern does hinge around parking. We do think that 23 parking stalls for a 150-seat restaurant is insufficient, particularly if the restaurant becomes back in favor in West Vancouver, which we hope it will. Not sure how the architect or members of the staff can work out a plan, if at all, to increase parking, but we are concerned because we think the overflow will not only affect Ski Lift, it'll come off onto Folkestone Way, which then means that we're dealing with a number of parked cars down the side of Folkestone, in and out constantly in the evening, which does affect our strata and the owners of our strata who are not that far from the street. When the Salmon House was functioning at a more optimum level, it was not uncommon for the parking lot of the Salmon House to be filled, and the overflow not only went on the street, but we also found on a number of occasions that individuals attending the Salmon House would end up in our visitor parking lot. And we have concerns that that could happen again. So certainly, parking is one of the major issues that we're concerned about. We are also concerned about the demolition and the construction being accessed via Folkestone versus Ski Lift. When we attended When we attended the public meeting, we were told that because of a number of reasons, the municipality felt that all that work should come off of Folkestone rather than Ski Lift. Well, there's only one small driveway going into the Salmon House. We believe that when you start bringing the construction materials in, start doing the construction, when you have the construction workers who can't park on site, that there are a number of problems that we don't think have been worked out to the extent that they should be. So we are expressing some concern about access to the site for demolition and construction. We're also concerned about the visual aspect that would happen when the buildings are complete. Right now, as was mentioned by the developer, there are pine trees along Folkestone that present a good visual barrier. And we're aware that some of the owners and stratas above us would like to see some of those trees cut. That's a matter that the developer and council can wrestle with, with the people above us.
Thanks very much.
We're not overly concerned about the height of the trees right now, but we are concerned that as the pine trees are growing, the space between the lower limbs and the road itself is beginning to thin out significantly. So when you're on Folkestone and you're looking down onto the site, there's a fairly large gap in many of the areas. And we think that from a visual perspective, that the landscape architects might want to spend some more time plugging that gap, either with some sort of greenery that's going to be built on the hillside between the parking lot and Folkestone. We are not convinced at this point that that's being addressed to the extent that it could be. We are also a little bit concerned about the sound barrier on the restaurant with respect to the exhaust fans. We raised that at the information meeting, and we see that it has been mentioned that it'll be in the evening and it'll be at a certain level. That may be appropriate. It may not, especially if the restaurant begins opening again at lunchtime. And I would imagine from a business perspective, they'd want to at some point be working more than five nights a week.
That's time, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we've only got one other person, so I appreciate our corporate officer doing his job well. But if you'd like to finish your comments, we would invite you.
The last point that I would like to make relates to the entrance driveway coming off of Folkestone. We're aware that the corner is going to do some landscaping, which will be an improvement with the overgrowth that has happened there. But we are concerned with the volume of traffic, now with the townhouses as well, coming in and out. It's a very sharp corner. And when you're coming out of that driveway and you're turning right, you immediately have a bend that takes you down to Ski Lift. And that can get quite busy when you've got two or three cars parked there. And we think that any improvement to that site in that corner would be a welcome improvement for cars coming out of the driveway and cars coming down Folkestone. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Can I just talk to you?
Sorry, a question from Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, two points of clarification, please, Mr. Ryan. You mentioned the noise from the exhaust fans. Did you mean heat pumps, or?
Well, whatever, I'm assuming they're exhaust fans where the restaurant is, that they'll be taking the food orders and moving them out, and that'll be combined with some sort of a heat pump. We're not familiar with all of the electrical system there. But fans can be quite noisy. West Vancouver has dealt with that on a number of occasions with restaurants in the Amble Side area. And I don't think things have improved that dramatically over the years with respect to technology.
Okay, I was just wondering, because it's the first I've heard of exhaust fans. I know there was some concern over the heat pumps.
You might recall, a number of years ago, where the Van City Credit Union is, there's some townhouses above there, there was a restaurant below. The odors were coming from the food, and the exhaust fans were not carrying out odor to the extent that it should be, and it was creating a bit of an issue. And it's not the only restaurant.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I had was either for staff or the project manager. The comments you made about your concerns over the access and capacity of the site during construction, do staff feel like they can address that, or the project manager?
I could, through the mayor.
Ms. McGuire?
Through the mayor to Counselor Thompson. I mean, there is only the one driveway access point now, so presumably that's why the construction staging would be accessed from that. There is no direct vehicle access from Ski Lift Road below, on the lower level of the site.
And you feel the site's of a large enough capacity to have the vehicles and equipment on there without an impact on the road?
Through the mayor to Counselor Thompson, that is a detail that wouldn't get specifically fully worked out at this stage. They would be required to have a construction management plan that our staff would review at the building permit stage if council was to approve the project, and those types of things, as far as like ensuring that the construction vehicles are located on the site and aren't kind of going out onto the streets is something that's considered at that time.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. Ms. McCarty, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, and Happy New Year, everyone. I haven't seen you since we've started a new year, and it's still January, so I can say that. And thank you, mayor and council, for your time. I'm here speaking on behalf of the chamber, the West Vancouver Chamber, in support of this project. On a personal note, I do just want to say that it is a, it was the first restaurant that I ever came to in West Vancouver, when I came for a visit many, many years ago. And the last time I was there was with my dear friend Penny Mitchell, who happens to be in the hall tonight. So, on a different topic. So, but we support this initiative for the redevelopment of Folkestone at the Salmon House. It preserves a much-loved, cherished, and some would say legacy restaurant with a refreshed look and improved facilities, which is important. It also preserves the commercial office space, which is important to some of the smaller businesses in the community, especially solo entrepreneurs. And it provides new residential units, which sound like they'll be beautiful. So just, it, you know, ticks all the boxes for what we look for from a chamber point of view, and we feel that it's also a responsible development in keeping with the OCP.
Thanks very much. Thank you. And I'll now ask if there is anyone else this evening that's come to speak on this topic. Hearing none, I will ask if there is a motion. Just before we close the public hearing, sorry, Counselor Snyder.
So I just had a question for staff.
Yes, please.
Quickly, to clarify, Ms. McGuire, if possible. The applicant had mentioned that staff had asked or requested that the number of parking spaces be reduced. I know that you seem to have a comment, and I would be interested in knowing what that was.
Sure. Through the mayor to Counselor Snyder. So when, in working with the applicant, there's, you know, many revisions that occurred along the way to respond to staff comments as well as design review committee comments. And given that the majority of the parking is surface parking, one of the things that we focused on was ensuring that that is landscaped and screened as best possible, but also did seek, so that, because the proposed parking exceeds the required requirements in the bylaw now. There is one thing, too, is the restaurant size, although the seating capacity may be similar, it is reduced restaurant size from what's there now. And so for both residential and the commercial, this is on-site, it exceeds the bylaw requirements. Also, as I described and as the applicant indicated, they did work with a transportation engineer who also validated the parking requirements and that being sufficient for the site. There's also excess parking on Ski Lift Road that could also be used in, you know, high-traffic times. So from staff's perspective, the parking is adequate to meet the demand of the site. Yeah, I think that could answer the question.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Gambioli?
Okay, I will recommend that all written and oral submissions regarding proposed official.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Cassidy wanted a question before the motion.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So I have a question. I don't know if it's for you, Ms. McGuire, or the developer. So this excess parking on Ski Lift Road, which I have previously addressed, so one of my issues with the parking on Ski Lift Road would be the fact that it is very dark. So if you were to park in the evening, you would be making your way up that hill in the dark, and it is a sharp corner, and so there is the opportunity to get run over. So I am wondering if there has been any thought to actually building a staircase up from Ski Lift Road?
I believe there is one in the.
Oh, there is? Okay, great.
And it is lit.
And it is lit. All right. Obviously, I have not been there for a while.
Thank you. Counselor Gambioli, just before we do that, I think the comments that we've had from the adjoining strata were extremely helpful. Most of those issues, I believe, can be addressed during the building permit phase. And I would really encourage the, particularly the landscape architect, I think the tree separation is really important for the neighbors, that they don't look down on the building. So I'm looking at you. Got it, Counselor Gambioli.
Okay, so I will recommend that all written and oral submissions regarding proposed official community plan bylaw number 49852018, amendment bylaw number 52802023, proposed zoning bylaw number 46622010, amendment bylaw number 52812023, and proposed land use contract development area agreement 1957, discharge bylaw number 52822023 for 2229 Folkestone Way, and development permit 22109 for 2229 Folkestone Way up to and including the January 22nd, 2024 public hearing be received and that the public hearing be closed.
Thank you. Is there a second, or Counselor Watt? Thank you. Discussion, call a question. All in favor, contrary, carried. Thank you very much. And we'll now turn to the regular council meeting. We'll call the meeting to order, and I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Counselor Cassidy.
I recommend that the regular January 22nd, 2024 council meeting agenda be approved and circulated.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. No, call a question. All in favor, contrary, carried. Thanks very much. Adoption of the minutes. Counselor Watt?
Yeah, so there's a slight revision to the motion here. So I would like to recommend that the minutes of the December 11, 2023 regular council meeting be amended under item 10.1 regarding council committees to show that Counselor Gambioli voted in opposition to the motion regarding the disbandment of the Glen Eagles Community Centre Advisory Committee, and that the minutes be adopted as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Snyder. And Counselor Gambioli, you're in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Got it. Call a question. All in favor, contrary, carried. Thank you. We'll move now to reports. The first item, I'll turn over to Counselor Watt, and that is regarding Horseshoe Bay utility undergrounding.
Did we have a staff presentation, or?
We might. And I just wonder if there is any member of the public. There may be people who wanted to speak to this item.
Thank you, Mayor Segar. I do see one, two, three, four, five names signed up for this item. All right.
Would you like to make a presentation, or wait to hear the input?
Good evening, mayor and council, members of the public. I haven't prepared a presentation this evening. The report is sort of stands alone, but happy to answer any questions.
Thanks very much. Let's turn to the members of public who are here this evening and wish to address council on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor Segar. The first name on our speakers list is Gail Chadac Costello.
Thanks very much. Good evening, and thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, mayor and council, for allowing us to present this evening. And my name is Gail Chadac Costello. I live at 6688 Royal Avenue in Horseshoe Bay, the building known as Galleries on the Bay, Penthouse One.
Lovely spot.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Thank, as I've already said, thank you for the opportunity to present. And I'm obviously here concerning the recommendation from staff to not proceed with the burying of the power lines at this point in time. I understand that's a position of perhaps in the future. My husband and I are relatively new to Horseshoe Bay, having moved into Galleries on the Bay in the fall of 2021. We made the choice of Horseshoe Bay due to its ease of access on foot for my husband, due to his physical disabilities, and its closeness to all the essential services, as well in regard to the fact that he grew up here and many of his family members continue to reside in West Vancouver. When we decided to buy our bay-facing unit, the realtor assured me, according to the community plan, that the very ugly power pole in the middle of our view would be buried prior to our move-in date. I believed him, and I'm sure he believed he was speaking the truth to me at that time. I've since learned the Horseshoe Bay Streetcape Design Guidelines adopted by council in 2016 represented the first major improvements to Horseshoe Bay considered since 1986. It has been reviewed several times by staff and council, with the result being the burying of the hydrolines have been delayed on each occasion. And we were residing in Horseshoe Bay, and were able to attend and listen to the goals, the plans for West Vancouver by those running for mayor and council in 2022, and we voted accordingly. Hence, we were extremely disappointed by the recommendation from staff to once again not proceed at this time. I would love to read the report, and so therefore must ask some obvious questions. Why is it not proceeding at this time? And if not now, when? The project will never be cheaper. Considering the new recommendations by council for Horseshoe Bay to be a high-density housing area, the burying of the power lines take on a broader significance. Adding residential units, excuse me, above existing commercial properties, as well as new developments along Bay Street and Royal Avenue, seems inevitable. Council would clearly benefit from higher-value property prices, and hence higher taxes for council, driven by much improved views. In addition, there are clearly environmental benefits to burying power lines, and some of these are excerpts from Scenic America, The Environmental Impact of Power Lines. Reduced wildlife impact. Underground lines eliminate the risk of mid-air bird collisions and electrocutions. Lower fire risk. By placing lines underground, the risk of electrical sparks igniting wildfliers is also significantly reduced.
That's time, ma'am.
May I finish?
Yes, of course.
I will be very quick. Preserving habitats. Underground lines provide less land disturbances during installation and help to preserve both natural habitat and scenic beauty. While underground power lines come with an initial higher cost, the long-term benefits they offer, both to the environment and to the safety of human communities, make them a responsible choice for our energy future. In addition, they have aesthetic values, allowing landscapes, cityscapes, and visually unique communities such as Horseshoe Bay to remain undisturbed. Therefore, I would encourage you to be forward-thinking and proceed with the burying of the power lines now to add additional economic, scenic, and environmental value to Horseshoe Bay and West Vancouver. Many thanks.
Thanks so much. I should say, members of council always have the highest regard for our municipal staff, but like in any system, there can be differences of opinion.
Correct.
And so perhaps tonight, I would ask Counselor Watt to read out the motion she's proposing. She will be moving a motion, and that might.
Alleviate my fears?
Well, let's hear her motion, and then there'll be certainly more discussion. But Counselor Watt, I'm going to ask you to put a motion on the floor.
So we're not going to hear from?
Well, I think if people know that they're speaking to your motion.
Okay.
And again, it is with great respect to our staff, but sometimes we can have differences of opinion.
Okay. So I would like to recommend that staff proceed with engaging the overhead utility companies to commission detailed design for the undergrounding works on Bay Street between Keith Road and Nelson Avenue. And number two, as part of the undergrounding work design, works design, staff work with the utility providers to identify phasing and/or future-proofing opportunities available to deliver the works. Number three, staff coordinate and review available detailed streetscape design options on Bay Street between Keith Road and Nelson Avenue. Number four, design costs associated with the undergrounding and streetscape design be funded through the existing appropriated community amenity contributions for the Horseshoe Bay Streetscape project. And number five, that staff report back at a future regular meeting, council meeting, with further information once design is complete.
Thank you. Is there a second, or?
I'll sit.
Counselor Thompson. Just before I go to Counselor Gambioli, I should actually give credit. That wonderful motion was written by staff, just with a different spin. And so, Counselor Gambioli.
So that's a pretty complicated motion. Can we get that up on the screen so that I know what we're talking about, and the public does, too?
Good idea. Thank you.
I'm afraid I don't have it digitally to provide on screen. I could read it out.
Could we put it on the, do we not have a?
We don't have a document camera, I'm afraid.
Oh, we don't have a document camera anymore.
No, there's not. There's no document camera.
You've got it. The bottom line of Counselor Watt's motion is to ask staff to proceed with finding a way. way to do this. And I think staff appreciate this is a priority for the council. So now, we'll go back to the speakers list.
Thank you, Mayor Seager. The next name on the list for this item is Chloe Kaufman, followed by Susan Alexander.
Thank you. Ms. Kaufman. Thanks very much for joining us this evening.
May I, may I, councillors? Hi, and public, welcome.
Thank you.
So my name is Chloe Kaufman, and I've been a resident of Horseshoe Bay for 19 years. Bearing power line, sorry, bearing power lines underground was promised by the council in 2020 during the planned park renovation and streetscape improvement in Horseshoe Bay. This commitment aimed to enhance the area's value, given the lack of any investment since the mid-1980s. As a real estate professional, which I wasn't, Gail, I conveyed this insurance to all my potential buyers, emphasizing the burial of the power lines on Bay Street and the last block of Royal Avenue. Regrettably, the promises remained unfulfilled, leaving me feel ashamed for publicizing inaccurate information. There are crucial reasons to prioritize underground power lines. First, to reduce outages. Underground lines minimize disruption caused by ice, snow, falling trees, and motor vehicles. It also enhances resilience. In the event of an earthquake, avoiding overhead lines falling across the roads, the ferries could ensure continued access to and from Horseshoe Bay, maintaining a vital link between the entire North Shore and anything getting out. So I urge a reconsideration of the initial commitment to bury the power lines, as it holds immense importance to the community's safety and resilience. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And again, if this motion passes tonight, this will be the beginning of the work to live up to that commitment made by our preceding council. Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Suzy Alexander, lifelong resident, business owner in Horseshoe Bay, secretary of the Horseshoe Bay Business Association, and treasurer of the Western Residents Association. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your continued efforts to uphold your promise to the Horseshoe Bay community. The Horseshoe Bay Business Association began asking for our streets to be brought up to a safe standard 10 years ago. Over these years, we've been told to wait for the sanctuary development, the park upgrade, the B.C. ferries terminal upgrade, and the incoming CACs from local development. The sanctuary development is complete and the CAC money given. Metro Vancouver has stalled the completion of the park plan, and B.C. ferries has changed tack and put money into upgrading their ferries rather than their terminals. And currently, likely due to Metro's increased DCCs, of the many commercial sites in Horseshoe Bay, only one seems to be tentatively moving towards a potential redevelopment. All this to say, how long can we wait? There will always be something we can say we are waiting for, but the cost of the upgrade will not go down. The proposal seems to assume we can wait years, but the conditions of our streets is already critical. The business and residents were promised revitalization. We faithfully engaged with the district. Unfortunately, in the last eight years, we have completed only one phase of our plan. Our main street of Bay, traveled on by millions of people every year, is in far worse shape than the back alleys and side streets of Ambleside and Dunderav. But still, we're told to wait. I came before you in July, asking for sidewalk safety, and so far, we have a single one-foot by three-foot strip of black patch in one spot in front of our new park, while the rest of our 40-year-old brick remains dangerous and shabby. Why? Because we're waiting. I know I'm asking for a leap here, and I understand that the staff are surprised by the cost of the underground thing, these lines, but I don't understand how waiting is going to change this fact. If anything, waiting will make it more expensive, and the streets will continue to degrade along with our ability to attract new businesses, residents, and visitors. These power poles are not only blocking the amazing views of How Sound, but they are also dangerously impeding our use of our northern sidewalk, a sidewalk that will one day front a completed park. Perhaps we could use this undergrounding of the power lines to gain space to install a connected bike path, one that accesses the ferry terminal and bus stop, that flows along Bay Street to the sanctuary and then turns up Nelson. Therefore, undergrounding of the power lines on Bay Street would in fact satisfy the climate change and sustainability piece, while at the same time gaining a safe space to ride for the visitor and resident. Hopefully, this would allow the district to engage with other stakeholders to gain partial funding to complete the undergrounding without waiting for large changes in development first. We are told that Horseshoe Bay is a jewel, and it is true that we are blessed with water and mountain views that are breathtaking. We have a community that is connected and vital. We all work hard and care for each other. But this jewel is in need of some work on its setting to show off its best qualities, and in turn, to proudly reflect and represent West Vancouver as a whole.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Speaker. Mayor Seager, we have two more speakers signed up. One is Megan Sewell, and the second, I think, might say Karen Harrison, or it could say something entirely different. I apologize. Thank you.
Ms. Sewell, great to see you this evening.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, Megan Sewell, Sewell's Marina, president of the Horseshoe Bay Business Association. And I really want to thank the current council and their attention to Horseshoe Bay. As Suzy Alexander said, we often feel like we're a second-class citizen in West Vancouver, and it's been really nice to see the attention from all members of council on Horseshoe Bay recently. I'm very disappointed that the power lines were not undergrounded years ago, when the first phase of streetscape began. The funding was there, the plan was in place, and it didn't come to fruition. So although the number seems really, really high today to underground the lines, I encourage new tools to be found, to find the funding, to deliver on that promise, and move forward with the much-needed street upgrades of Horseshoe Bay, from Nelson right through to Keith and up Royal Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Sewell. And anyone else?
I have no more names signed up.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address council this evening? Okay. We have a motion in front of us. Is there any discussion? Counselor Snyder, and then Counselor Gambioli.
Yes. So the new proposed motion does not make any mention of the amount of monies to be spent. Is there some control or thoughts? I know that the report provided amount laid out as far as anticipated, I don't know that it captures like $450-ish thousand, if I'm not mistaken. Is that the number that we're sort of anticipating and working off of with this motion?
Through the mayor to Counselor Snyder, the majority of the expenditures would be as outlined in the report, so the $450,000 towards the hydro detailed design. There would be additional design fees associated with the civil works for the streetscape, as well as any design fees required by the other overhead utility providers. So we don't have those exact numbers. I don't expect they would be anywhere close to the fees associated with the hydro design, but so we are looking at a little bit more than $450,000, but I'm not sure the exact amount.
Okay. And just another question is just wondering, the civil, the streetscaping works can still be done independently of the undergrounding? Should, I mean, I know the cost, and I appreciate Ms. Sewell's comments there, and that it's unfortunate then when the opportunity was there and the funds were available, it wasn't done. We can't change the past and the history, so we have to move forward. Now we have a quote in front of us that is a staggering number in the report. Again, I know that's a very big contingency of 40% that's in place there, and I know that things could still be less expensive, and that there's monies available through the existing CACs. I just wonder about whether or not the streetscaping component can commence and still occur without or being in concurrence of the undergrounding of the power lines.
Through the mayor to Counselor Snyder, I just wanted to clarify your questions. You're asking if we do the detailed design for the hydro, would we be treating the detailed design for the civil streetscape work separately? And if for some reason the hydro didn't go ahead, would the design work for the civil be a waste? No, I don't think so.
So there would still be value in that work being...
Yes, I believe so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snyder, I think most people who live in the Bay understand that, given the new official community plan, the neighborhood plan for Horseshoe Bay, it is anticipated that there will be a new development taking place. I have spoken to the owners of some of those buildings and said to them, expect to be contributing to the cost of the undergrounding, and they understand. We're going to be looking for the development community as buildings are redone to pay for this work. Counselor Gambioli.
Yeah, so just following on that, the costs, in the report, it says, so the current expenditures to date for this project between 2017 and '21 is $1.7 million, right?
Through the mayor to Counselor Gambioli, that's correct.
So when you say this project, that's only the hydro part, the undergrounding part?
Associated with the $1.7 million?
Yeah.
No, that's the full cost associated with what you see delivered on Royal Avenue between Bay and Bruce. So the design fees, the archaeological, and the construction itself.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, between where and where? That's not...
On Royal Avenue, so the Phase One works on Royal Avenue between Bay Street and Bruce.
Right, okay.
So what's been delivered?
The last block.
That's what those costs went towards.
Okay, so that's the $1.7. So I'm trying to get the bigger picture. That's the streetscapes, really? No, it's kind of both.
There was some conduiting that was installed in order to allow for undergrounding as part of the Phase One works, but the majority of the costs were associated with the streetscape itself.
Okay, so it's a little bit of both, but it's mostly streetscapes.
That's correct.
Okay, and then the park, just to refresh my memory, I'm trying to think of bigger picture, the park upgrades, which are now done on the west side of the park. The total, my understanding, is $7.3 million has been spent to upgrade the park. Is that...
Yes.
Can someone confirm that for me? So $7.3 plus the $1.7, so that's eight, that's $9 million invested in Horseshoe Bay in the last three years. And so now, how much is left then? Sorry, $3,800,000 remaining in the appropriated CACs. Okay, that answers my question.
Thank you.
So that's a total of nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 million dollars for Horseshoe Bay from the original discussion. Okay.
Just with respect to the, this process, I was very involved years ago, version one, with the undergrounding of the power lines in Ambleside. And the mayor at that time, Mayor Lanscale, set up a couple of members of council to oversee the undergrounding project, which I was very happy to participate in. And I would hope if this proceeds, I'm going to follow his practice and ask a couple of members of council to be on the oversight, just to ensure that we get it done and there is citizen participation. Counselor Cassidy.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And so, Horseshoe Bay is a gorgeous site. The tragedy of Horseshoe Bay happened many years ago when they brought in the B.C. ferries. That was absolutely heartbreaking. And Horseshoe Bay could be so much more than it is with taste and time. So I am just concerned that we potentially, if we're passing this this evening, are going to be leading the residents down the course of utility yet again. Because at the end of the day, we can do all of these studies, which are going to cost some semblance of money, and at the end of the day, do we have the money? So, and I chance to say, the answer's no, we don't. So my question of staff is, is there the potential that we could do this job piecemeal? The main street, complete that, and leave the others to the various development processes that are coming along? Because the view, by and large, is the main street.
Thank you.
Through the mayor to Counselor Cassidy. So staff have explored with hydro, the idea that we would only be undergrounding poles on Bay Avenue. The challenge is, they have two systems in place, so they have a transmission system and a distribution system. And in order to achieve that, the costs that you see included in the report are the costs. It's our understanding at this point in time that it would be difficult to phase them just by virtue of the two systems and how they work together, and being able to actually achieve the undergrounding.
Okay. As I said, I really fear spending money just to arrive in exactly the same spot, which is, we have no money. So my next question is, since the other resident of Horseshoe Bay is B.C. ferries, has any approach been made to the province to ask for money in assisting in beautifying something that they have succeeded in making looking not so hot?
Very fair.
Through the mayor to Counselor Cassidy, engineering hasn't engaged in any discussions with B.C. ferries, as you're sort of describing. Now, whether or not there were to be development by that agency in future, I mean, that's possibly something that staff could explore.
Well, I definitely would be reaching out to the province, because not only is Horseshoe Bay a place of residence, it is a place of tourism. And if we get it right, it's going to be a gorgeous site yet again for all who come, and increase the tourism factor in British Columbia. It can be beautiful Horseshoe Bay, just like beautiful British Columbia. So I would go after the province, since Mr. Eby is doing such wonders for us so far.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you.
Certainly, the approach to the province, I think, falls squarely on council's shoulders, and I think we will take you up on that challenge.
I am just wondering if we should defer this until we have a conversation with the province. I do recognize that that could be well months, but I really don't want to turn around and set people up yet again.
The only thing I would caution or comment on that is that we will be seeing applications for redevelopment, that we'll be paying new CACs that will help fund this work. So we need to have the plan as to how much it's going to cost, and how do we do it, when we negotiate those CACs. And to me, the first investment is getting hydro to do that plan. Thank you, Counselor Watt.
Yeah. You know, right now, I'm just thinking back to the old Salmon House versus what the new Salmon House will do, bringing in more business and, you know, ultimately helping pay for itself. But boy, I've got a lot of things to unpack here. So Counselor Gambioli, you referred to $7.3 million plus the $1.7 to nine, and then where was the other four that I missed that took it up to the 13?
That would be...
Oh, okay. Not in the housing fund. Okay, so that's entirely separate. Okay. So just in addressing Counselor Gambioli's comments again, you're saying, okay, so in the last three years, we've invested $9 million in Horseshoe Bay, but what about all the years from 1986 until now? It's actually a relatively low investment when you look at the time period and the money that has gone into other parts of the municipality. So I certainly sense the frustration of the speakers, many of whom have been here longer than I have. And there's so many places I could go with this. But also, Counselor Cassidy did address the issue of approaching the province, and I have also been saying this for some time. I would like to go forward with this, with the initial design work, but I feel that there should be something in tourism and somewhere else. And I did reach out to North Shore Emergency Management, and, you know, I received a rather brief email back today. I received a rather brief email back today due to their own time constraints. But they did just reiterate the, um, safety issues with power lines. And in particular, when you look at an area like Horseshoe Bay, anybody who lives out there will attest to the fact that we get far more outages than I would think most other areas of the municipality. And at the end of the day, I know Megan just had to leave, um, but the Sewell family has invested a lot of money and time into helping improve and, you know, bring up the, uh, well, I would say the standard of living in many ways by visually and through investment improving Horseshoe Bay. And they also put money into this. Um, I believe it was 1 or 1.2 million came from the Sewell family to go toward this. And that actually takes me to a question for Ms. Muller. Um, so, the, there was the infrastructure buried under Royal. Now, I rolled through some video of a prior meeting from July 2019 on the weekend, and I thought that I saw a number in there presented by staff that 1.2 million had gone into undergrounding infrastructure. I've also heard 300,000, so I'm just trying to determine what has already been invested thus far.
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Watt, so I, uh, that was a previous administration's report. I'm not overly familiar with, um, the numbers and the expenditures. I, I, and I'm not actually sure I understand the question. Is, could you repeat that?
Just trying to determine what was spent in, on the undergrounding thus far.
So there's been roughly $300,000 spent on provisional measures for conduiting on the undergrounding for the phase that's been completed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Oh, thank you. Um, actually, I just wanted to clarify, because I'm not sure it was made clear. The initial funds of about 450,000 that Counselor Snyder referred to, those are funds that would have to be spent anyway to pursue this project. And by that, I mean that it's not in, on top of what doing the project will be. This is a design component that we need to understand. Is that correct?
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Thompson, if, uh, the scope of the project includes undergrounding the utilities, then that is a cost that would have to be incurred in order to achieve the detailed design. That's correct.
Okay, so it won't be an added cost? It will, it'll go towards the final cost of this?
That's correct, yeah.
I, I should just comment as well, because I've, over the years, had quite a bit to do with hydro. They give us an upset price. It's highly unlikely it'll cost anywhere near that much money. They, they ask for almost twice as much as they actually anticipate. I can't guarantee that, but I suspect that the final bill won't be anywhere near as high as that. Anyway, we have a motion in front of us. We've had good discussion. And can I call a question? All those in favor? And I think it's carried unanimously. Thank you. Item number five, ladies and gentlemen, we pulled, because this one's pretty funny. We are really determined to find a way to encourage smaller, interesting shops in our business districts. And we just discovered today that if you open a Bitcoin exchange, you can call that a retail business, because you're selling, if you know what this is, an NFT. And we just have to fix that, because I really don't think a Bitcoin store is a retail outlet. So we'll be back with some revisions to that bylaw. And we'll now turn to my motion regarding the favorite little part of our community and a beautiful little church at St. Francis in the Wood. Now I'll ask Counselor Thompson to make a motion.
Yeah, I'd be glad to give an emotion. Is there any statements or presentation from staff?
Uh, no.
No, I'm just here to answer any questions, if that's helpful.
But I, I could ask our corporate officer, because I did go this morning just to put up the photo of the area we're talking about.
I'll do so. Mayor Sager, bear with me while I fiddle with the mouse and keyboard. And just so you know, we do have one member of the public that has signed up to speak.
Thank you.
To this item.
Okay. Yeah, it's right near the lighthouse. Don't laugh at my photographic skills, please. There we are. So that's the area, the, the dirt parking lot that we're talking about this evening. And perhaps before we go to a motion, if I could ask, who wishes to address council on this matter?
Mr. Moonen.
Mr. Moonen, nice to see you this evening.
Your worship, members of council.
Well, my, my name is John Moonen from West Vancouver. Uh, I'm here on behalf of St. Francis in the Wood Church in Tiddley Cove. Uh, before I get going, I brought some friends from St. Francis, and I thought I would just ask them to indicate who they are. Many of them are in our choir, so this is your chance to preach to the choir.
Very nice, Mr. Moonen.
So we're very grateful to the mayor and Counselor Thompson for this initiative and this motion, and we support the motion. Uh, the part of Piccadilly in front of our church and the parking area for the park are showing their age. Uh, I'm not going to get into how old I am, except that I'm six months older than the mayor. I think this is the...
We've known each other our whole lives. Isn't this a bit frightening, you know?
It's frightening to me. I think this is the only part of Piccadilly that remains unpaved. And I haven't done a complete survey, but it must be one of the last dirt roads in West Vancouver. Uh, there's potholes, erosion, the mayor's photo, uh, the failing edges. So there needs to be some hard surfacing. Um, Penny Mitchell, again, who's here tonight on behalf of the church, has the scars to prove the dangers of this particular lane. Uh, but she's, uh, too shy to show you her knee. But we have a lot of people who use the church. It's not just our parishioners. But we have, um, a small Montessori, we have events, we have, uh, park users that use the parking lot. There's a lot of people that use that part, and, and quite frankly, the lane in the parking area needs some work. We are not at the level of Horseshoe Bay. We don't need 10 million dollars. But I think this 50,000 dollars would be a very good start. So we felt that in keeping with the park-like nature of the area, that bricks interlocking pavers, if you will, would be nicer than asphalt. We do need a, a hard surface, but the bricks would be nicer. They would complement what our neighbor has done with their driveway, would complement what we've done with our walkway, which are these gray pavers. So I think it also complements the historic aspects of the church, which is, in a couple of years, going to turn 100. So I, I would like to thank you for bringing this forward, to confirm that we support it, urge you all to support it, and we will do whatever it takes to help implement it as the, I guess, the largest property owner on that part of Piccadilly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moonen. And I, I suggest if, if this amount of money isn't enough, I'll turn to some of the people in the room, and we'll go down there and put our gum boots on and do it ourselves.
I'm in.
You're in. I'm in. Thank you. Um, sorry, Counselor Watt, that's you.
Um, question for Ms. Muller. Um, so is 50,000 enough to do this, or will we be putting on our gum boots, all of us? Do we feel...
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Watt, uh, so there was a previous report that outlined some costs based on our existing unit-based contract with our paving contractor. Uh, those costs for paving came in higher than the 50,000 dollars, but, um, should council direct staff to proceed, we'll probably, um, refine, have a closer look at the limits of the paving area, and we'll go out to market to see if, um, through a competitive bidding process, if, uh, you know, the costs come in within the desired budget, and we'll report back to council.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy. Oh, sorry, Counselor Watt.
So I'm, I'm curious, if it is more than 50,000, then there would, the, the church community would be willing to throw a fundraiser of, of... Thank you, Mr. Moonen. You're going to come and speak to this.
And we are restricted in what we can spend our money on as a charity. We can donate to other charities. So if you'd like to convert yourself into a charity, we would think about it. But we really don't have the money either, but we do not give to non-charities.
The, the challenge they've got is municipal property that this is going on. And, uh...
But...
I, I'm actually fairly confident we can get a bid in at this price. And it may, it may mean calling upon some of the people in our business community in this industry to help us out.
And to that degree, we would be happy to participate with the muni in asking the business community and other donors. But as a church, we just can't do it ourselves.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
Um, yes, so I hate to be the potential Negative Nellie in this conversation, but it looks like I'm going to be. So I drove out, I'm very familiar with the church. I've attended weddings there, and unfortunately, I've attended funerals there. And it is a gorgeous, it is a gorgeous building, it's a gorgeous church in an absolutely gorgeous neighborhood. So in my previous years of going out there, there were potholes in that parking lot. So when I visited recently, I was very surprised to see that there were no longer any potholes, and it was quite decently gravelled. Now, not perfectly gravelled, but decently gravelled. And when I think at 50,000 dollars of taxpayers' money to go towards this site, um, I wonder, is it necessary? For 50,000 dollars that we previously had individuals here from Horseshoe Bay that we could spend on the sidewalks in Horseshoe Bay? We could spend 50,000 dollars on the sidewalks in Horseshoe Bay, I mean, in Dundrove and Ambleside. Recently, the Ambleside-Dundrove Business Improvement Association spent 25,000 dollars working on a number of their sites, okay, to improve the sidewalk. So if I were to be honestly representing the taxpayers of West Vancouver, I need to be thinking of the areas which great, the greatest use. And that would be the sidewalks in Ambleside, Dundrove, and Horseshoe Bay. And to Horseshoe Bay's point, yes, they are the long-ignored residents. So that's where I stand on, on this situation. I think it's unnecessary. I think it's a vanity project. And you do get preferential tax treatment for all those other entities that use your church. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Just one clarification. In the, in the motion, the money that will be funded from the community amenity contribution, so it is not taxpayer money, it is money paid to the municipality through developments. Thank you, Counselor Cassidy.
I just had one more point, thank you. That those community amenity contributions arrive in our pockets at the district, because neighborhoods within this district have had to accept densification.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Counselor Gambioli.
Thanks. So, so I have a few questions. And you said there was going to be a map, which I still haven't seen, or which none of us have seen yet. Is there a map that could be on the screen?
No, sorry, it was a photograph.
No, that's not going to work?
I'm afraid I'm not aware of any map. My apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you said...
There was a map in the presentation, but... Yeah.
Well, there wasn't any map with the, uh, yeah, there was a map in the report that staff did, uh, in March, last March, okay? So, but I, I, the problem I have is that I don't think we're talking about the same things here. And the, um, report that staff, and I'm sorry, because nobody else has got this map in front of them, apparently, except for me, right now. So, um, I'm actually not clear on what area exactly we're talking about here. Is, is anybody else clear on this? Who can tell me what, uh, you know, the motion says? It's desirable that we take out 50,000 dollars to report back on the feasibility of creating an interlocking brick-paved parking area within a budget of et cetera, et cetera, at the existing gravel parking area. So are we talking then? Uh, I'm speaking to Counselors Thompson and the mayor, because it's their motion. So, um, on this map then, you're talking about the seven parking spots, but you're not talking about the space between the parking?
No, no, we're talking about that.
The whole thing?
Exactly what I took the photo of.
The photos that you showed earlier? Okay, okay, because that, that part is, is unclear, okay. Uh, okay, so, so that's, you know, that's part of my concern. So, so in May, the motion of council was that consideration of this paving be deferred for further discussions with St. Francis in the Wood Church. So I don't know what happened during those discussions, and there has been no mention of what happened during those discussions, and that was last May. So my first question is, my second question, I guess, is, what were the discussions? Can someone please summarize those discussions?
There might have been, and Mr. Moonen would be the best to address this. There might have been some dissension amongst the parishioners and the church. That's now been resolved, and I understand that it's a unanimous, I don't know.
There was no dissension amongst the parishioners. We have two neighbors up Piccadilly, um, who wanted to keep it as a dirt road, uh, but they like the paving, and they're no longer objecting to him, you know, making the improvements.
The paving stones.
The paving stones, yeah. And I'm not sure I would characterize it as a vanity project when parts of this lane and the parking area are actually quite dangerous to pedestrians, seniors, and, and other users. Uh, we, it, the municipality has recognized that in the past and has regularly filled those potholes with gravel. But the last time they did, they told us that the underlying plastic mesh, which held all the gravel, uh, was no longer doing its job, and it would be very expensive to replace. So at that point, the suggestion came from the district to put in pavers. We agreed with it. It's not our road, it's not our parking lot. It belongs to you, and it's dangerous, and it needs to be fixed.
Thank you, Counselor Gambioli.
Uh, all right, so then I have a question from that comment to Ms. Muller. Is it dangerous and does it need to be replaced?
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Gambioli, periodically, we conduct, um, maintenance to even the surface. Um, uh, I, I don't believe it's dangerous. I mean, it's a gravel surface. So it, it's, there's no real gradient.
But it's not on your...
That's my own...
It's not on your list for replacement very soon as a result of wear and tear and what would normally be on the, on the updated list?
It's, it's not on any short or long-term capital plans to resurface the area, no.
Okay, all right, so that's enlightening. Um, can someone tell me how many places of worship there are in West Vancouver?
Sorry. Didn't anticipate that question.
You didn't? Okay, well, I can tell you, because, you know, you shouldn't ask a question unless you know the answer. The answer is that there are 14 places of worship in West Vancouver. And I know that because I looked at the, um, at the, um, property tax exemptions, permissive property tax exemptions that we passed in September. And that was more than I expected. Anyway, there are 14. Um, so I guess my question to Counselor Thompson and the mayor in bringing this motion is then, why is the 50,000 dollars, you know, we've got 14 places, we've got 14 places of worship, why is this proposed for a space only at one of them? I'm concerned that, you know, word gets out that we are spending 50,000 dollars uh, paving, uh, parking, which is actually in a park, uh, for the benefit of a church. Why aren't we proposing, or, you know, we're going to get some requests from the other 13, uh, uh, places of worship, because I'm sure they all need a coat of paint and need to fix the potholes in their parking. As a policy, uh, I'm concerned about that statement.
Thanks. Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind taking a, a, uh, a go at that, and perhaps staff can fill me in if I'm wrong. This is a municipal road and parking area. It does not belong to the church. And, you know, although it may not be deemed dangerous by staff... And, you know, although it may not be deemed dangerous by staff for having potholes and for driving through and walking dogs through and whatnot, it becomes hazardous when seniors show up in walking apparatus and trip up on uneven surfaces. We have weddings there and when it's full of muddy puddle, muddy?
Potholes.
Potholes, good lord. You know, it just causes general hazard and inconvenience to people attending things that they do at the church, from weddings to professionally dressed couples dropping their children off at the preschool. This is an ongoing expense for staff. They do spend money on maintaining it. And it is my understanding that the current gravelling of that road is a very special type of gravelling with the mesh grade of some sort that is failing. So the actual replacement to a standard that I think they've become to expect would have a cost to it. And I don't know if Ms. Muller can speak to what the cost of replacing that mesh and bringing the gravelling up to speed would cost.
Through the mayor, Counselor Thompson, I haven't, I would have to get back to you on that. I don't have that in front of me.
And I've forgotten it too. I think we have discussed it, but it was not expensive. And, you know, I think in the eyes of the church and certainly over my own mind and I'm sure Mayor Sager's, is the efficiencies of looking after things and to be able to pave something or put some tasteful pavers in becomes more cost-effective over time. And I'd have to say if someone who's spent decades in the community and raised a family and participated wholesomely in the community, this church is, is beyond your average church in the way of community contribution. They have the school. They have many weddings that the whole community delights in. They have an active parish. They are a community center, a gathering place for many events. And of course, it's just endless what they bring to our community. They're community partners. And I don't like it when you say if you do one thing, it's going to set a standard for 14 other churches to come forward and put out their hands. This is not that sort of case at all and it's kind of actually offensive to think so. I'm going to stop there and address other issues as they come up, but I hope that answers your concerns around why we're considering money for this parking lot.
Thank you, Counselor Watt, and then Counselor Snyder.
Yeah, I'm going to presume or ask the question, the other 14 or 13 churches, they've got paved roads in front of them?
I can't think of any other spot in our community that isn't paved.
So what is the actual length of road that requires the pavers? Because it's not just about the parking spots. It's the actual road we're talking about as well?
No, no, it's just in front of the church. It's probably 80 feet. I'm going to guess. Mr. Moonan, what do you think?
I'm not going to guess.
Okay.
I think it's about $50,000 long.
There you go. Well done.
Okay, and, sorry, another question. How many roads do we still have left in the municipality that are still dirt that have amenities like a church or a school nearby? I'm quite curious.
Through the mayor, Counselor Watt, I'd have to, no, we have, I'm not sure that we have roadways providing frontage for institutions that aren't paved. But we do have a significant amount of laneway that's not necessarily paved. But I don't have the exact, I would have to get back to you.
But not in front of amenities. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snyder.
I do have a few comments. First of all, the parking lot is, again, owned by the district and not the church. The church does provide many, many community events that the community is available to access and is very involved in the community. So it's not just the church that uses this parking lot. In fact, the parking lot is, Counselor Gambioli mentions, is a joint adjacent to the park which is there. So it is not only there for the park users as well. It also provides access to the trails that exist, to the public parkways and to the public beaches that are served in that community down below. Again, there is also an expense that is an ongoing expense that as Director General indicated, sorry, that it's an ongoing expense that I believe, I think it was the neighborhood of about $2,500 a year. I think I read it in the report. It may be less than that. But the district maintains the maintenance of it as needed. So that could be on multiple occasions throughout the year, I'm assuming. So those costs adds up, which would, I would think, be eliminated with the permanent parking area there. So I just think that, again, to call it a, well, I won't repeat what Counselor Cassidy referred to it as because I would disagree with that. If it has anything to do with a vanity thing, it provides a lot more service to the area around than just to the church that also gets the benefit of.
Thank you. Counselor Gambioli.
Right, sorry, this is part two of my questions because I wasn't actually finished. So actually, the parking area is within the park. And according to this report, it's called Pilot House Road Park. So, you know, what, part of, this is, this is the problem I'm having with the map. We've talked about three different sections. So the parking area is actually within the park. The roadway is between the parking area and the entrance to the church. So I agree that that is, you know, municipal roadway that could or could not be, you know, improved with pavement or something. But, you know, my concern is just, is a bit of a policy concern. My second concern is, you know, paving, since when are we adding new paving in parks? You know, I don't think anyone's, we haven't been doing that for a long time. If anything, we're trying to take away parking in parks as a policy. So, you know. Example of what?
Where are removing parking and paving in parks?
Well, the mayor just spoke to me about the idea of removing parking on Bellevue.
Argyle.
Argyle, sorry, Argyle, yes, Argyle.
But paving parks?
Yeah, removing paving in the park. Anyway, that's.
Outside and like?
No, well, I'm talking about Argyle, outside the self-purse.
It doesn't make sense.
I think it makes perfect sense, but I'm talking, so you can talk in a minute. Okay, so, you know, so I have a concern about, you know, proposing to pave a public park for use for a private organization. And, you know, as a policy, I think that's really, it's really dangerous. And then, of course, we've got Counselor Cassidy who would like to charge for parking in parks. I'm sure that might be her next question. But we are moving towards pay parking in parks. So, you know, then we run up against that question as a policy because we're here to create policy, right? We're here, that's what we do, is we, we create policy. It's the bigger picture we need to look at. And the question came up earlier about maintenance. So, you know, when I see interlocking brick, I get a bit concerned because, you know, the interlocking brick is failing at the rec centre parking lot. The interlocking brick is failing all over, it's been there a lot longer, but all over Ambleside. Who's going to maintain this interlocking brick into the future then? Is that going to be the district? What's the agreement? Because that doesn't last very long and then it all needs to be redone. So it's not a very effective material, I think. I realize that, you know, it might look nice, but has anyone thought about ongoing maintenance? It would be the district paying for the interlocking brick. Okay. Okay, well then, I guess that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
So Counselor Gambioli earlier asked, is there any church out there that essentially is using district land for parking? And so I would like to note that St. Anthony's Catholic Church at Inglewood and Haywood does actually, the intersection there, does actually park on district land and it's gravelly and it's potholy. And so similarly, it would be exactly like St. Francis in the Woods. And all of these churches, to get their preferred tax treatment, serve as various uses within the district and are vibrant aspects of, within the district. So firstly, I take exception to the use of CACs as well because as I referenced earlier, CACs are granted by developers to offset what is going to be happening in that neighborhood by accepting the densification. That is the purpose of the CACs. That's number one. So if we're talking about CACs being spent, then we should be spending it in Horseshoe Bay, which took the major project, the sanctuary. So that one is, that one is that. And there has been no major development in St. Francis in the Woods area, in Lower Caulfield. The only new build is the house immediately as you come in, the house on your right. That is the only new build in that area. So I take great exception to this. And yes, and I'm sorry if you think I think it's a vanity project, but I do. I looked at the site. It's part of a park. If we go around filling all the potholes in all of the routes in West Vancouver, we're going to be extremely busy. And when we talk about people falling, try coming along the sidewalks in Ambleside and Dundee where people fall reasonably regularly and then sue the district. So as I referenced earlier, I have nothing against St. Francis in the Woods. It's a gorgeous church. You do a magnificent job, but this is taxpayers' money. It was given into CACs for a definitive reason. You have not accepted any densification, nor should you. You've got a beautiful area. But give it to the neighborhoods that have accepted that densification that are heavily walked streets, Horseshoe Bay, Ambleside, Dundee. And not that long ago, I believe Mayor Sager and I think Counselor Thompson as well was walking with an elderly member and Counselor Watt and I think Counselor Snyder was walking with an elderly member of the community. And they were with walkers and crutches and so forth. And the purpose of that walk by that individual was to prove to the mayor and the various members of council just how dangerous our sidewalks are. So 45% of the population of West Vancouver lives in Ambleside and Dundee. And I think the 45% of the community that have accepted the densification needs to have those CAC monies, if they're there, to spend on their sidewalks, as should Horseshoe Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. And of course, that was a wonderful day of walking with the, with the seniors. And I'm very happy that thanks to our Ambleside ADBIA, as we call them, the Ambleside-Dundee Business Association, the sidewalks have had a massive improvement in the last month. Still work to be done, but, yeah, no, it's, can't, can't fix everything in one day. But we can fix a beautiful little church and make it more usable. Counselor Watt? Oh, sorry, Counselor Thompson.
Thanks. Just a couple of questions from the comments and clarifications. Can you actually tell us how many patrons you have on average during the week? In a week or a month or whatever you feel best qualifies your use at the church?
We have our facilities director here. I'll just ask if Chris Stringer has a number. We do have a number in terms of the area. It was given by Penny Mitchell. The lane, which is not part of the park, but the lane that would be paved is about 4,500 square feet.
Okay. You can come back to that number of patronage. And to staff, can you confirm that St. Anthony's, the church that Counselor Cassidy referred to, does have their parking on district land? Their gravel parking?
Through the Emerita Counselor Thompson, I have to get back to you. I'm not familiar with the situational sort of parking arrangements that are happening there.
Yeah, I thought it was paved, but that's okay. I'll check into that. And the one sort of philosophical question I have is, is, does a church actually refer to itself as a private organization? And I ask this because Counselor Gambioli referred to the fact that we shouldn't set policy to pave for private organizations. Does any church consider itself a private organization?
By definition, they're a place of public assembly.
Public assembly, right? Public use and amenity, right?
Are you asking?
I am, but I'm asking a question that I think I know the answer to, as Counselor Gambioli likes to do.
Well, I just wanted to answer the question. We have probably 400 users, regular users a week. And that doesn't include special events, funerals, Caulfield Cove Hall, weddings and other things. And that's not counting every little kid that comes to Montessori.
Oh, really? It's not including your school traffic? Okay. And then the other thing I want to clarify is the CACs, we actually have a formula. And I think only 20%, maybe 30, go into the area of development. The rest go into the general funds to improve areas around the whole community. And we came up with that formula last term and, because it used to all go into general funds. And I do agree that when there's development in a community, that that development should enhance the community. But there is a great portion of the CACs, and I think that's 50%, that go into general funds to improve the community in general. And when you look at a place like St. Francis in the Woods, it draws people from all over the community, not the neighborhood. I think they deserve a consideration there.
Well, I think we've had a very wholesome and full debate and, haven't we? And I think it's time to call a question. So I'm going to call a question. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I don't think we have a second or?
Oh, we have another, oh, sorry, Counselor Snyder seconded the motion. So it's moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Snyder. I'll call a question. All those in favor? Contrary, Counselor Gambioli and Counselor Cassidy. The motion is passed. Thanks very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you all out there with your work boots on. Okay. If I could now move to the consent agenda items, Counselor Snyder.
Yes, I'd like to recommend that the consent agenda items, as follow, be approved. Item 9.1 regarding memorandum, proposal for amendment by law, alignment of 2024 fees and charges in regards to firework regulations.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Thank you. Any discussion, question, all in favor, contrary carried? And now we'll turn to reports. And I understand, Counselor Cassidy, you'd like to start.
I would, and thank you very much. So on to one of my favorite subjects, which is liquid waste. So we had our first meeting of the year last week and many things to discuss. And one of the things was the campaigns that they have had during the course of the year to work towards improving essentially the water quality of what goes through our treatment plant arriving in our oceans. So one of the campaigns, which I would just like to reiterate again, because it is so simple and does not cost any money, is essentially when you do your laundry, please use half the quantity of detergent. And the same in your dishwasher. We have soft water and we do not need to use the ingredient quantity that is on the bottle. Half of that because of our water. And even more importantly, wash your clothing in cold water because hot water breaks down the fibers in synthetics. And the treatment plant cannot get rid of those microfibers. So those microfibers end up in the ocean. So please, cold water will get your laundry just as clean as hot. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. And I know you're going to start that YouTube channel soon. Tips from Counselor Cassidy. Counselor Watt?
Well, I have a tip for Counselor Cassidy. That's it. That's my trick. No, you mentioned the plastic laundry jug. Don't you use those little environmental strips? Okay. And they're less expensive.
Thank you. Counselor Gambioli.
Okay, not a liquid waste report. Just wanted to let you know that I am on a dedicated community, which, committee, sorry, that we, that is called the School Traffic Advisory Roundtable. So Start is the name of the committee, or Roundtable, I guess. We meet every second month at 8:15 in the morning. And that's why you don't kind of, it's not in this building. We're online. Because there are about. are about 16 members of this committee. There are people from our engineering department, from the school board, the chair of the school board is on the committee with me. There are people from our, representatives from our police department, the bylaws department, from the school board, administration, principals. It's incredible how many people are needed to discuss school traffic. And of course, this morning was probably the worst school traffic of the year so far. But we decided that school traffic advisory is less descriptive of what we're trying to do now, which is to be a bit broader and encourage parents and students to get to school using active transportation, the bus, the bike, the foot. And so we are now changing the name to the School Mobility Advisory Roundtable, which makes us the Smart Committee. So I am now on the Smart Committee and we're working hard, but just wanted you to know of that little change. Apparently, we don't have to bring that to council to get approval for the name change because we are a roundtable, but I just thought I would let you know.
Thank you, Council Gambioli. And yes, I made the mistake of going down through Westmont today, trying to avoid 15th Street at 3 o'clock.
Oh, dear.
Oh, my. I had no idea.
Run the bike?
No. And I would just like to say on the weekend, I had the pleasure of attending a lovely function, first annual tea. Now, I don't really drink tea, but it was for Liz Bird, a former member of council who passed away, and a number of her friends organized a really beautiful fundraiser. The funds that they collect will go to the Kameek Center. And in that one short hour afternoon tea, they raised 3,500 bucks.
Wow.
So pretty darn good. And hopefully it takes place again next year and it was nice to see Ms. McCard there. We had a good time. Thank you. So that's it. Can I have a motion to receive the reports from mayor and council? Moved by Council Cassidy, seconded by Council Lambert. Question, all in favor, contrary carried. Are there any public questions or comments this evening?
Yes, Mayor Sager, we have one member of the public signed up for this item, Leem Ibrahim.
Thank you, Ms. Ibrahim. How are you making out? You've joined us before.
Yes, I have, twice. Greetings, mayor and members of council, Salaam and Shalom. My name is Leem Ibrahim. I'm a resident of West Vancouver in the Glen Eagles community. Tomorrow I turn 36. For my entire lifetime, the collective so-called West has started, aided, and funded invasions, occupations, and wars in the area of the world they call the Middle East on Semitic peoples like myself, all the while claiming to be against antisemitism. Today, we are witnessing in live time on the screens of our phones and our computers the genocide of a people 75 years after the genocide convention promised never again. Today, 107 days into the latest assault on the occupied people of Gaza, the settler colonial apartheid state of Israel and its genocidal rampage against the indigenous population of Palestine has killed over 25,000 people. Taking into account those who have perished from bombs and those who will perish from hunger and disease, 2% of a population is in the process of being wiped out. When I was 15, we marched in the streets of Vancouver, demanding that our governments in the West do not invade Iraq. We knew that the propaganda of weapons of mass destruction was a fabrication and the war was illegal. Our numbers in Canada reached more than 200,000, yet the invasion began. My mother, in frustration, told her mentor, a middle-aged man of European descent, how can 200,000 people in the streets be ignored? He replied, there are 200,000 in the streets, but millions in their homes. To the politicians, these millions are in agreement and say yes to the war. And so I'm here today to tell you, our elected officials, the closest elected officials to us in our cities, do not be the million that stay in their homes while humanity gets torn apart. Do not be silent. Your silence is compliance. This assault on Gaza will not defeat Hamas, nor was it intended to. Hamas did not exist during the Nakba of 1948, when 300,000 Palestinians were massacred and 700,000 were expelled from their homes. The propaganda that we are fed by our mainstream media has made us forget that the children and mothers and elderly of Palestine are targets and not collateral damage. I understand that my concern is not considered relevant at a municipal city council meeting as I was told the last meeting I was here. However, I believe in the power of a grassroots movement and I believe that city councillors do and must represent us in our cities and they can take our message to higher levels of government. Burnaby Council proved itself courageous enough to be the first Canadian city to unanimously vote on a ceasefire because this latest aggression in Gaza was too horrible and they had to speak up.
That's tight, ma'am.
I have one more sentence. Today is the 107th day of the most well-documented genocide in world history. How horrible must it be to have to film and photograph your suffering for the world to believe you and have the decency to say no, we will not allow humanity to fail again? I urge you as councillors to add your name to the list of city councillors calling for a ceasefire. It does not cost any money and it does not take any time. And please vote as a city council to unanimously call for a ceasefire and materialize the ceasefire by telling Canada to impose a two-way arms embargo on Israel. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Members of council, any questions? I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Council Gambioli.
I would recommend that the January 22, 2024 council meeting be adjourned.
Council Watt, seconded, and I'll call a question. All those in favor, contrary? Thanks very much for joining us this evening. The meeting is closed and...
I have a question. Is that okay?
Absolutely.